I won't let you say anything.
Oh, you're wonderful.
But I will ask you to stand up. I'm just trying to.
I really, I like, I can't sit anymore.
I'm sorry.
I know. And then you can't even.
Yeah, but when jury, they come in, I don't know when the jury like that again.
Okay.
You know, I, what's, one thing I realized.
I can definitely.
I'm also NSBA, like you know, pay for my hotel and my.
Okay, alright.
So, do I, June?
Yeah, this way.
NSBA?
Yes, let June know.
Oh, June.
Oh, NSBA, she's taking.
Okay, I am, I have something here.
She's taken all of, um, all those requests.
Okay.
Well, are you pushing work off?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Has, she gives, she sent me the email, she gets it.
Oh, good. I have a chair.
Yeah, I'm great, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. The January tenth meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors will come to order. I almost had to use my gavel. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser.
Here.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Here.
Ms. Lewis. Mr. Oats.
Here.
Mr. Fiero.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mrs. Morris. Dr. Hartsfield.
Here.
And Ms. Robinson.
Here. Natalie Lewis has requested an excused absence this evening. Is there any objection to excusing Board Member Lewis from this evening's meeting? If not, the absence is excused. I do want to take a moment, um, to introduce you to our, um, new board secretary, um, Ms. June Kokmeyer. So I would just like to ask her to stand. Um, welcome to Kansas City Public Schools. Um, she is a former teacher and also has served as the role of an executive assistant in many roles here locally. And we're very excited to bring her aboard, welcome. Is there any objection to approve the agenda? If not, the agenda is approved. The Chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present our regular business item two point zero one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, the administration is asking the board to take action on All Copy Products Incorporated. This is for our copier and printer services in the district at the, in the amount of one point five million dollars.
Are there any questions regarding this contract? It would now be in order to have a motion to approve this proposal. It is moved and seconded to approve the contract with All Copy Products Incorporated for the multi-function device lease and managed services in the amount of one point five million dollars. Is there any debate on the motion? Hearing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Manser.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis. Mr. Oats.
Yes.
Mr. Fiero.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Mrs. Morris. Dr. Hartsfield.
Yes.
And Ms. Robinson.
Abstain. There's a majority in favor and the contract is approved. Now, we recognizes Doc, we recognize Dr. Bedell to present the monthly board workshop, board monitoring four point three and four point four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are extremely excited to, uh, present to the board and the community, uh, our board monitoring of, uh, board policy four point three and four point four. We will have, uh, Linda Quinley, who is our, uh, Chief Financial Operating Officer, uh, here for our school district. And she's going to conduct, uh, the report on our financial condition and activity and then financial planning and budgeting. So at this time, I will pass the microphone over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, and thanks for the opportunity to, um, talk with you tonight about four point three and four point four and our fiscal monitoring, um, update to you. Knowing that as we look at these, uh, they are resources for how we meet, um, one point oh, which is the ends and inevitably moving instruction and student achievement forward. Very wisely, this board established these two, uh, board monitoring policies to make sure that we check ourselves and align our resources to where they need to be and keep those in the right place and that we assure fiscal integrity. Every month, you receive a treasures report from Mr. Oats. And that's looking at the point in time then. Tonight, we're going to really focus with some of our key performance indicators on June thirty balances because that's a typical measurement time. We'll look at some different times, but we'll be looking at year end. Four point three. If I can make it work, there we go. Um, says specifically that the superintendent shall neither cause nor allow the development of fiscal jeopardy or a material deviation of actual expenditures from board priorities as established in the ends. And that is really what we're here to talk about tonight. The requirement put upon us under this. The ends being to consistently improve academic achievement without fiscal jeopardy. We want to start at looking at some of those key performance indicators for you. And you see we're beginning that historical trend as time goes forward. Um, percentage of combined fund out, uh, fund balance. Fund balance is sometimes reserved, referred to as reserve balances. It's basically the resources available at the, at the June thirtieth point in time annually to move forward and again the new year. It's calculated by taking the previous year's total expenditures and transfers, the actual reserve balances divided by those previous total expenditures and transfers. And you can see that over the last three years, we've averaged just over twenty seven point six six percent with a little bit of ebb and flow in that, perfectly normal, perfectly acceptable, and a very solid fund balance trend that we have. Percentage of available or allowable bond capacity. This is one that really is an interesting one for us to talk about. You notice between June thirty of twenty sixteen and June thirty of twenty seventeen, we have an increase in allowable of just over seven point three million dollars. Allowable bond capacity is calculated under a DESI described calculation as well. And it's a percentage of our assessed valuation. That limits, that's how the board's limit is created on how much debt it can, general obligation debt it can incur. So as our assessed valuation goes up, so does our allowable limit every year. We note here in the outstanding column that as of June thirtieth, twenty seventeen, we had just over a hundred and two million dollars of outstanding debt. It's really important for us to keep in mind that's not actually general obligation bonds. We have no GO bonds on the books, but rather we have various lease type of debt vehicles that really live outside of the GO bond obligations because GO bond is intended to be repaid with a debt service levy when the bonds are approved by your voters. The debt we have on the books is paid through operating transfers in order to support those. And so technically, while we're showing we have available three hundred and thirty-two million dollars, we really have four hundred and thirty-four million dollars that we could go to our voters with today, should the board so choose. Really very, very solid, incredibly unusable to have zero outstanding general obligation bonds in the state of Missouri. Standard and pores rating. This is something really, I think, that the board and the administration needs to be proud of. An A plus stable rating is very solid. It basically means strong. And strong meaning the confidence that the rating agency has in our ability to meet our financial obligations in a forward-looking model. A rating is based not on where you are today, but where you are today and what the rating agency thinks you're going to look like a few years down the road. Because their job is to make sure that the people who might offer debt to us, debt instruments to us, are comfortable with our ability to repay. So you can see that we had a November ten rating of A minus stable, a July sixteen rating of A plus stable. Ratings happen when you need to issue debt. And so therefore, the last time we needed to issue debt was the summer of sixteen, when we issued the certificates of participation for just over fifty-six million dollars. And so that is our most current rating time.
Let me chime in on that component because the board did approve, uh, I want to say fifty-two or fifty-six million last year with the certificate of participations. And what I will share with you and the community is that the evidence is there around how that money has been spent. And one of the things that we know we needed to do was some capital projects, in particular with our athletic fields and then some additional, uh, renovations at some of our schools. And so what we want to do at this point is we want to be able to close out these contracts, make sure that we are completing projects and then provide a report to the board and to the community on how that money was spent because it's evident that it's being put to good use right now in the school system. But we will work on providing a report to you all because we know in the future, we gonna, we will have some additional capital needs. And that's something that we'll begin to talk to the community about as we continue to evolve here over the next several months.
Okay. So our next set of key performance indicators under this category, um, the first one we have here listed is the, are the financial and A one thirty-three audit findings. As you know, we just received in December, the report of the auditors for the sixteen seventeen year. There are two types of findings really that you would look for in an audit report. One being, um, that of financial material weakness, the other being compliance findings. Those compliance findings relate normally to requirements of state or federal systems around transportation, attendance, grant-related items, those kinds of things. We did experience three compliance finding audits last year related to the adult education grant, mostly related to documentation. It's important for us to know two things. That grant came to an, a permanent end at June thirtieth of last year and is not on the books any longer. The board really should be pleased and have confidence in the historical, um, information behind our audit reports. Percentage of minority and biz, and women-owned business participation. This is really a relatively new focus for this board and this administration as you, as is evidenced by the June thirtieth, twenty sixteen number of two point four four percent. What this is intended to be a measure of is the use of minority and women-owned business in relation to how much of our budget is spent with those firms versus total. And so we want to see that number grow. Our goal is to get somewhere in the twenty-five to thirty percent range. You can see significant growth happened last fiscal year. We're on basically a flat path for the first quarter of this year, but it's really early. So we know we have some work to do in this area. We also have, um, uh, recent tools provided to us through a diversity study that's going to allow us to incorporate policy and procedure that lets us continue to improve this. But we are on, definitely on the right path here. The third item, investment balances. And I apologize, I meant to get a little note on this slide that didn't make it. Investment balances as of December thirty-first. There's a reason that we look at June thirtieth as a normal rule. That's the fiscal year end. Those are the, all of the annual reports that make their way to DESI. DESI also, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, also asks that mid-year, we report not only our fund balances, but sort of a picture of the cash position. And they do that because December is deemed to be the low point in the year. You'll remember from Mr. Oats's presentations that we see those revenues coming in slower than expenditures in the early part of the year. And that's about the fact that we have, um, my analogy is to the farmer. We spend our resources, July, August, September, through the fall. And then we sell our crop and get our crop payment in January because our revenue largely comes from our local property taxes. Those bills go out in October, they're paid mostly in December, they come to us the following month. Important to note on this bil, balance, that looks like a lot of money, a hundred and six million dollars in December, if that's our low point. The reason that it looks like that is because we received over seventy-eight million dollars during the last week of December for the property tax payments that people had paid in November and early December. This county is really, um, very good about turning that around pretty quickly. They actually made two or three payments to us in December, so they kind of keep that money rolling to us as it comes in. Those, so those balances, the important thing is, have been very consistent. Our goal is to keep about twenty-five million, so if you look that we got seventy-eight million in, um, the last week of the calendar year, then we're, we're right on target. Assuring fiscal integrity and strength. Fiscal integrity is achieved only through good internal process. We have really great process. And I think that, um, it's important for us to talk about why it is those KPIs look as solid as they do on the slides before us. So through intentional efforts, some of the things that we do, administrative policy, procedure and practice around bidding, purchasing, then contract review, contract approval, and contract monitoring processes really help us hold our partners accountable and ourselves as well and make sure that we have, always know where we're headed with each individual contract. In our financial information system, Alio, if you're familiar with it, we use security roles and approval hierarchies to make sure that we meet that really critical point of separation of duty. So a great example of that is, um, a bookkeeper at an elementary school puts a purchase order on for paper. She doesn't have the ability to get that purchase order through the system and approved or that bill paid without a hierarchy of approvals going on. We have a strong system of that. In fact, recently, we've added Ms. Thompson and myself to those approval queues just to keep the layers strong so that there's a lot of awareness about who's using their budgets how, that they're being coded properly and purchases in that loop to make sure the bids have happened. So we really have a good process of that. And it has definitely shown in the audit reports you've seen the last several years. Another way we do it is of course, our annual external audit report, um, which, of both the compliance and financial data. And as we've just seen tonight, this board and administration has been brave enough to be open to external reviews beyond that required audit report. And that can do nothing but make you better and give us, uh, the ability to look at ourselves and through someone else's eyes. Additionally, we want to talk a little bit about how we have intentionally made efforts to achieve stability and strength. One of the things that the state of Missouri does is tell us within limitations how we can, uh, we can invest our funds. As a, um, public entity whose dollars are public dollars, you can imagine, our investment opportunities are not that exciting because they specifically are created to make sure we don't have great risk. So you won't see us buying, um, the la, latest hottest stock because it's not allowable. So, so with those restrictions and limitations, we also review our depositories. We have an obligation to look at the financial statements of the banks and entities with which we do place our funds to assure their fiscal solvency before we go and, and let them have access to our monies. We receive collateral back against those deposits beyond the FDIC limits. So, um, that is a process that happens in the business and finance area just to make sure we are always well-invested and securely invested. Another thing that we have to do, we have an obligation of, we have to be aware of and we have to adapt to what's coming down locally and at the state and federal level around education policy and funding. If we aren't aware of what's happening, then we don't have the ability to, um, advocate for ourselves or to adapt to it. And so that is something that we do at a high level here. We want to always consider the impact of financial decisions on that bond rating. Bond ratings get us lower interest. That's kind of the primary thing. People want good bond ratings so their interest rates will be lower. The other thing it does is it gives a good external measure for people who may not be, who may not want to read that entire audit report. It's not that exciting. But it is, it's an, it's a good external perspective of our sound condition. And then of course, we want to always manage our debts to assure timely repayment, which we do, and monitor our reserve balances, which we'll talk a little more about it in, in a couple minutes. Four point four, financial planning or budgeting. So now we've, we've looked at what our practices are to operationally make sure we have good integrity and our systems are saw, are strong. Four point four is really your direction to us behind our planning and budgeting process. Specifically saying, we shall not deviate material, materially from the ends as our priorities and we shall not risk financial jeopardy. And I think very wisely with an addition that it should be on a multi-year plan. So let's look at some key performance indicators in this same area. Annual operating revenue over or under expenditure trend. And you've got, again, have three years' history there. So you see the, last year, we had roughly twelve point six million dollars more revenue than expenditures, which is about five point four six percent of our total expenditures. Our goal, when we have solid reserve balances like we do, is not to put money in the bank. And so we'll continue to work on this KPI to, to make that number smaller and make sure that resources are making their way into the classroom and not into the bank at the end of the year. You'll see us continuing to do that. But we have a statutory obligation to make sure we never spend more than the budget allows. So we have to work within those two important factors. Future revenue projections, it's kind, it's important to note, we're just starting the budget process, so these numbers you need to, to know, aren't written in stone yet. They'll ebb and flow a little bit. But we do expect continued decline in state funding due to declining enrollment and that impact on ADA. We have the luxury of a three-year look back. And while our, our enrollment stabilized this year, for state funding purposes, we're able to take advantage of our enrollment three years ago. Next year, that drops off and we have to be a little more realistic to current enrollment numbers. So we know we'll, we'll see drops in that. We know there's also an impact of growing charters on our state revenue source. Our hope is that we're able to really become comfortable around what our future assessed valuations will be because again, that is our primary source of revenue, that local property tax. Cumulative revenue and expenditures, this is again, a look, um, that Mr. Oats gives us every month as we look at where we are, um, revenues in and, and expenditures out. And you can see when you look at those percentages that expenditures lead revenues this time of the year. We'll see that flip next month because January should be a really great month of receipt for us because of the property tax that comes in. But again, you see consistency as we're starting to trend and track this information. So what do we do on our side for financial planning and budgeting to make sure that we are focusing on the ends and giving you the best information when we bring that budget recommendation to you? Every school in the state of Missouri files what is referred to as an annual secretary of the board report. But June, you won't have to file that. The business office will take care of that for you because it's really our financial report to, to, um, DESI. And it asks us to report by line how we are receiving and spending our monies. And we're using that to create some historical data trend for ourselves. So let's look at our ASBR over the last five years and see where we have increased or decreased our expenditures. And then let's have a conversation as a cabinet about, has that been effective? Has that not been effective? Do we think we need to redirect and rethink? The same is true, um, we're gathering the same data. It's going to be some really huge, very exciting, um, spreadsheets with some comparison districts. Dr. Bedell and I sat and established those because we want to compare ourselves financially to those districts we would compare ourselves to from a performance perspective as well. So those will be schools of similar student enrollment and similar, similar student demographic, as well as some that may have different demographic, but just be our neighbors and, and we want to compare to ourselves. So we'll be expanding that kind of data that we use to help us expand our thinking about how we might be better. Then really important to do is to integrate that student data with the financial data. So if we see a climbing trend in a certain area of spend, but we do not see an increase or an improvement in performance, or vice versa, then that's a, that's a clue to, to look at what we've been doing. Is it effective? Do we have our resources properly aligned or do we need to do something differently? We are excited that for next fiscal year, we'll be working with Dr. Shepherd's tiered system for schools to help us prioritize budgets. We'll use that tier system on top of this kind of data. And we'll really start meeting pillar D of the strategic plan and making sure that we're aligning our resources with our needs. I understand that February twenty-first, there will be some training on that tiered system. By that point, we will have really laid out some budget thinking behind that as well for you. Another piece that is really important, my theory is that your budget next year is best built off of knowing what this year's going to look like. So we don't work budget to budget. We work budget to projected actual to budget. Because if you don't recheck yourself, if you don't look at those assumptions, say, hey, we missed that one, this one was spot on, this change happened, then it doesn't give you the opportunity to redirect. So we'll be doing that right now and considering the accuracy of our assumptions and considering, should they change? We need to know, um, if assessed valuation went way up, was that a one-time thing or is that a recurring thing? How does that change our assumptions, which then has dramatic impact on our budget? So we need to be aware of why we've varied and will it continue? And then we want to rethink and reset our, um, our whole budget plan based on that. Another key factor in planning is again, awareness of local, state and federal education policy and funding. If we don't know what's going on, we can't plan very well. So we have a job first to advocate and adapt, um, when final legislation comes out, um, the first happening. And we have a great presence. We have Mr. Ma, Masters, he was in Jeff City yesterday talking on a couple of specific issues. Dr. Be, Bedell and you and other leaders are right here, um, having an influence on what's happening locally. Those are really critical roles for us. We also, um, have this year signed up to be, um, a fiscal monitor for proposed legislation. So every piece of proposed legislation that has school anywhere in it comes to several of us in the district with a summary overview and a request for information about how that will impact us physically. Because those legislators need to know that before they support us on or against any particular legislation. There's a ton of them, it's a lot of boring reading, but it's an important, um, way for us to be connected with what might happen and to have influence by responding. Then, um, as we continue focusing on the ends while we plan and budget, we're going to be, we want to always focus on adequate cash flow in a single year, but we want to come to a five-year model that lets us plan our fund balance management over a five-year history. It's really important that every time we bring you a recommendation, every recommendation has some cost, right? It's really important that when we do that, that you know and that we're able to tell you with confidence, what does that mean five years from now? If you say yes to this today, what's the impact on our fund balance five years from now? Are we still at revenues over expenditures or does it go under? So we're going to implement this model, um, that will help us guide that and help us be able to answer those questions for you each and every time. We're going to also, uh, work knowing that we need to probably have some emergency funds. So what if DESI funding, the small amount we get, got held up for six months? Do we have adequate balances to live through that? What if a giant storm came through the state of Missouri and through Kansas City and took out six of our buildings? Do we have six times our deductible available in the reserves? Just so that we're reasonable at making sure things are in place, uh, in that five-year look. So we're pretty excited, well, I am anyway, about doing that. Focusing our resources on the ends. We're going to use that comparative data to determine how we should focus and to know if we need to alter our plan. We're also going to dig in very deeply this year in a fairly aggressive zero-based budgeting process, um, expanding what we've been doing in the past. And we're going to do it, the cabinet first and then everyone else. It's going to allow us to look at our historical spend, evaluate again its effectiveness, evaluate again if we think that should repeat and make decisions going forward using that. This again, is going to really line up with the strategic plan as we ask our budget managers to make their request for next year. We're going to ask them to tell us, how does that align to the strategic plan and how is it going to help us meet our ends? So finally, really a quick summary for you. The fiscal integrity and strength is sustained through continuing the great practices we have in place around internal control, around bidding and purchasing, continuing, expanding and utilizing in different ways various pieces of financial data, aligning those with student data. We'll have a transparent and inclusive process as we plan and budget so that we can take input and consideration from all parties. And we'll really continue to be aware and advocate for ourselves when it comes. when it comes to policy and funding around schools. We'll work with you in a collective process to determine what our targeted low should be in the fund balance. That'll be interactive, collective exercise we work through in the coming months, so that, again, it's not our goal to have too much money in the bank ever, but it's our job to make sure we have the right amount in the bank always. And so it's an important process for us to walk through, we're very excited about it. We're also very excited to unveil this five-year tool that we're going to work with, that keeps us always looking ahead and making sure we're considering the future impact of current decisions. I can tell you that I have been thrilled, because I am a geek about this kind of thing, at the engagement and interest that the cabinet has shown in this process so far, and in committing really to knowing and understanding our budget more. It's not necessarily something everyone loves to do. And so I'm really thrilled that they have really been actively engaged. And we have depth in our finance and budgeting department that collectively, we're going to be a really good team with you as we continue doing this going forward. And I think that's all I have.
Just one thank you, but for our board and for the community, many of you are in here, and those who are listening livestream, the board has four major things that they have responsibility for. And one of those four major things is to approve and accept the recommendation of a budget from the superintendent. And what you just heard was, is that we're going to take a different approach in how we build our budgets here in the Kansas City Public School District, and to really ensure that it's very intentional and tight, and it's tied into our strategic plan, something that the board approved back in September. And so we're extremely excited, yeah, is it going to require a lot more work on our part? Absolutely. But I think when you see the end product of what we're looking to do from a one-year standpoint to a five-year standpoint, I think our board and the community will be very pleased with the transparency and the connection to what it is that we're going to be doing in this district over the next five years.
A board member, Mancer?
I don't know, oh, there I am. Thank you, that was a great presentation, it's really helpful. I love the thoroughness of what you're walking us through. When you go back to page eight, and you talk about the key performance indicators, and we look at the middle part of that, where you talk about the future revenue projections, and I can see this declining number, and can feel a little bit of heartburn on that. Makes me want to eat some of the candy that's sitting up here. Can you, is that, is the projections based primarily on our weighted average daily attendance, our ADA, our head count? Or have you also incorporated changes around food and nutrition funds that the federal government has proved back on in some of these other things?
That's a great question, and this is a work in process. So this is going to change as we get through. But largely, the change you see year to year is about ADA, state funding, and then federal programs. We know them to be declining in a lot of areas. So we've taken that into account. What we really are going to dig in more deeply and look at at a greater level is that assessed valuation number. We want to really think about our reassessment years, get some trend data, and look at that again. A good sign of all things, to me, is what's happening with Proposition C, which is the one percent sales tax that all, everybody pays across the state, and it goes to kids. It is paid by ADA. So all the sales tax that's paid in Kansas City ends up largely being distributed out to other districts. Every district gets the same amount per child, regardless of where the tax was collected. Every year, the last four years, what DESI has suggested we use as our per-student amount has been less than what we've actually received. It's on that trend again this year. So we'll be looking at those lines really deeply, working to use some of that trend analysis. But I expect you'll see that local revenues may come up from this revenue projection, the decrease is about state and federal.
Just to ask a follow-up question or request. Would you be able to provide for the board at some point, just the two to three areas where there's significant federal change in dollars and the impact? And additionally, do you see the federal tax plan that was just adopted? If you can describe for us, you know, if you have a one-sentence answer tonight or something in the future, but to be descriptive about how that federal tax plan may affect us?
So the answer is yes, I will be able to. I have not read the full tax law. There are a couple of opportunities coming up for us to get some expert input on how we think that's going to impact Missouri schools. The greatest probably being the impact on personal income tax and corporate income tax. As those decline, that has an immediate impact on general revenue, which is what largely the foundation formula is funded out of. So that is going to be something we really have to watch, and we have to know the implications of. But we will definitely get you any piece of update information we can on all of that.
Board member Oates?
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. First, I guess comment to the board. As we approach budget season, we'll be giving more and more presentations to kind of tee up Mrs. Quinley's new way of formulating the budget and the budget process. I know for myself, just reading over some of the things that she plans to do, I am personally interested, because it will give me a, I feel like it'll be tough the first time, but after that, it'll have a good understanding about how this comes about. You know, the zero-based budgeting and showing what goals our budget actually represents will be good, having a good understanding about how the budgeting team and the different members of cabinet, instructional priorities, all that, how that interacts to create a budget. So I hope everybody has their thinking cap on over the next four or five months, because we'll do a lot of data diving over these next four or five months.
Board member Fierro?
Yes, first of all, good job on the presentation. And I, within the policies that you shared, I guess I'm not seeing if it was clear to me, but how does the policy address the use of our operating reserves? You forecasted out the potential shortfalls, and certainly, we need to be prepared to respond to those. So certainly, one source would be the operating reserves. What flexibility do we have to be able to pool dollars to meet some of those shortfalls?
There's a lot of theory conversation between, behind management of fund balance. The key, so use of our reserves. The key is going to be getting that five-year model built, so we know what we're already committed to in the future. For example, we have multi-year CBAs. So we need to know what does it cost in year two and three to meet those current commitments. We need to build in Lincoln model. We need to build in down the road, the possibility of a Southwest. We need to build in all of those things the board gives us direction on. And then we know, as we look at fund balance, what happens in the bottom of the model, what we need in a given year, or what we have access in a given year, and have to come to you about how we would use those balances. I think the most important consideration around it is that we have to decide the philosophy on, is it okay some years to dip in if we know we're not going to the next year? Is it okay to make a significant one-time spend, because we know the next couple of years, we're not going to, and balances are still going to be okay?
So Linda, as a follow-up, so that is something we need to define for you all, okay? That's, that was-
We'll do that with you in an exercise that we have planned coming up.
Good, that's what I was trying to get at, thank you.
I did want a little bit more clarity around that as well. So based on what you talked about with the multi-year model, with the five-year projection, so in relationship to the fund balance, will we know five years out, how we plan to utilize the fund balance, less the amount that we're legally required to keep?
So there's a couple of questions in that question, and I like them both. Yes, we will. So when the five-year model, that is the model I built, that I like to use, forces us to really think hard about revenue projections, it also forces us to really think hard about what we're going to be spending and what our commitments are to those years, in those future years. So we'll be really clear with you about, in this year, you see an increase in expenditures, because that's the year Lincoln opens. And this year, you see an increase in revenues, because that's the year we think Lincoln hits its peak enrollment. Those kinds of things, we'll see that. The second part of your question, that now is kind of escaping me, because you didn't specifically say it, and I heard it, but now I can't keep it. Okay, what's that?
Less what's legally required.
Oh, yes, that part, thank you. So there, people always say, what are we required to have? There are no requirements. The state of Missouri, the only law in the state of Missouri around fund balance is that if you get to three percent reserves, you're insolvent, and the state will show up to help us out. Everybody's fund balance is really, what should be their minimum in the model, which is kind of what we're going to work on with you? What is our acceptable minimum? What should we never go below, because we want to make sure that we keep operating the way we like to operate? That is case by case individual. We will be different than most, we'll need to be higher than most, in my opinion, because of our state funding matter. While every other district like us is happy when December, January, and February get here, because our revenues peak, they're getting fairly significant monthly amounts from the state that we are not, because of how charters are funded through us. And so our June thirtieth balance needs to be higher, probably, than most of our peers because of that. So that's an exercise we'll work through with you, so that we make sure we establish what that ought to be.
So can you help illustrate how it works when there is a need that was not thought out before? So for example, utilizing, I think we approved a proposal to utilize some reserves to help us with some buyouts for teachers. And so can you illustrate how we should expect to see those processes happen in the future?
Yeah, absolutely. So as we get our model developed, and we agree on what needs to be the target out here in year five, target being low, don't go below it. Every time we consider a recommendation for you, we're not only going to look at it from this year, but we're going to drop it in that model, and see when that accumulates over five years, what the implication of it is. So in the case of a buyout, where you had a one-time large payment, it's going to go into that year's expenditures, but it's not going to be in next year. So it really is just going to show us that it tapped the reserves one time. However, if we said, instead of that, we were going to give ten percent increases to salaries, that's a continuing expenditure that then we'll see that cumulative result of in the five-year model.
I have some more questions, I don't want to dominate. So can we talk about the MBE? Can you go back to that slide about the MBEWV? Okay, so can you talk a little bit about how we got from seven percent, I mean, two percent to seventeen percent? I know you weren't here then, but if you have any explanation, and I'm wrecking my brain trying to remember, because I think this information may have been presented before, but how did we jump up so high?
I do have some data, we may have to ask Ms. Thompson if her-
What's a tier two? Oh, like the contract we just approved?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. And with this, what is our target? You said it's twenty-five to thirty percent range. Is that based on the disparity study as we try to grow?
That has been an informal target. We need to take that disparity study and work on an actual policy and recommendation to you around that. That's been an informal target based on the disparity work done in the department.
That looked like I, also trying to think through potential work. Would that be a board policy or internal policy?
The policy, it's under a DJ policy, which is an MSBA administrative policy. That's currently where it is. So that would be the policy that we would bring to you for reconsideration. It is currently in that policy.
Okay, and I have one last question, and it's more about retirement, our retirement. And I don't know if that, is that something that keeps you up at night, in terms of how do we fund that over time? But what are your thoughts regarding a long-term?
I think it was July fifth, when Aaron said to me, "Oh, hey, you need to know." And so, yes, it's been on our minds since then. And recently, their department has taken the recommendations that our retirement system is sending right now to legislation that are going to be necessary increases in order to sustain the system. And we will build that into the five-year model. And so we're going to see, we believe, a one and a half percent increase in our contribution rate next year, and then the year after that, a little more, and the year after that, a little more, until we get to what might be the stabilized state. Is that going to be a significant increase to our operating budget over coming years? It absolutely is. And it's one of the things we're going to have to work into the model and make sure that we plan for.
Jump in, please, yeah, go ahead.
Linda, question, in your vast experience, good job with the presentation. I think it's clear, you know, what our challenges are ahead. And I think, you know, those of us that have, you know, managed finances and are responsible for fundraising, certainly, we always have the tendency of looking at expenses, and, okay, can we afford this, and how are we going to handle it? But in your experience, what approach have you taken to look at, let's say, our existing revenue line items, and look at it from an income maximization process as well? Because, so anyway.
Yeah, that's a great question, too, and it's a really interesting one in the area of public education. Because we are not like any other entity, even public. In the private sector, my expenses are rising, and I need to deal with that, I raise my prices. Well, I don't know if you guys know this, but you cannot raise the price, that we charge our families, because all kids come free, right? And so we don't have that luxury. But we do need to look at lines that we can impact, such as high-needs funds and those kinds of things, and begin targeting those lines and figuring out how we go to them. Lines that are set by the state, that Proposition C amount, that state funding amount, we can debate, but we can't control. So there are actually, when it comes down to it, very few lines that we can control in revenue, which is why it is really important we identify them and we target, so we will be doing that.
And to also just help with the follow-up on that question is, I mean, this is where we know that we have expenditures and things that do fall beyond what we can do right now. But once again, Mr. Fierro, this is where we should have the same opportunity to go to our community, just as many other school districts do. But when you're in a school system that hasn't had a bond referendum since nineteen sixty-six or a levy increase since nineteen sixty-nine, you know, we wouldn't necessarily have to ask those questions. It's just some things we have not done here over decades that school systems in this state and all around the country have access to. And so it's that planting that seed component, you know, to move this system to.
I would say that about seventy percent of the districts in the state of Missouri, after we all survived two thousand eight and two thousand nine, said, "We have to talk to our voters." We have experienced permanent reductions that are not going to return to us, and so we have to go to our voters. So that's something that we'll wrestle with you as we go forward.
And I think, just to follow up on that, and I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Mancer. But one of the things that we heard on the federal level with the new tax plan is, because you no longer can write that off, your property tax, that impacts the willingness of voters to participate in things like that. So as you develop a game plan based on the new information that you learned about the, it would be great to know from our perspective how that impacts our ability to go to the community.
Absolutely.
Ms. Mancer?
This is very informative. I think the other question I have is, do we think that we might get to a point, given that we, the current political environment in Jefferson City is not really a pro-revenue growth kind of perspective at this time? We've got federal government that is trying to shrink federal government and push the burden back onto the states. Is there any, do you think there's any indication that districts in our metropolitan area might look at some other pooled or shared- districts in our metropolitan area might look at some other pooled or sharing of resources, of expenditures, whether it be training, technology, transportation? Are there any things that we might, down the road, I understand it's not in front of us at this moment, but we, we will not be the only ones struggling to adapt to this environment. And I'm wondering, through some of our local memberships, like the Council of Great City Schools and some of the relationships, if we'll be looking at some of those.
Absolutely. I had a great conversation with our Director of Purchasing today about some of the things that keep us from buying at the best possible rate. We don't have a warehouse. So, most school districts our size buy paper by the truckload. They bid and buy by the truckload. Since we don't have a physical warehouse that lets us bring that much in and process warehouse and take it out, we pay probably 20% more for paper than everyone else. So, that's on our list of how can we accomplish that with the resources we have. The bid you approved tonight for all copy paper, we put that RFP out intentionally saying, we're going to be less specific about what we think we want because you're the experts, those of you who are going to bid. And we want you to offer us a solution that is competitive and useful. And every bid was nearly 50% less than what we've been paying on that contract. So, we're going to have to be really intentional about those kinds of efforts and how we look at things because we have to create our own, our own efficiencies.
One of the things that was useful previously is that we would get a list of our capital needs and how we could potentially pay for those. And so, I appreciated the theory that Dr. Bedell shared around, you know, the amount of certificates of participation that was released, us wanting to close out those contracts and think about how do we continue to fund capital projects. But I, I don't know if it's in the budget process that you were developing with Board Member Oats, but it would be good to have a list of all of our capital needs and what our options are. Like, we did the energy savings, which we, you know, were able to exhaust that. And then, when could we, if in the interim of, of potential levy, are there more certificates that we can release and when would that be and what would that pay for? So, again, that might be in your budget process, but it would be useful information as I, our needs are still there, obviously.
I had a good conversation just yesterday around that too because we have a 20, a 2006 or eight true facility study. Then, we had a 2013 infrastructure study, not a full assessment of our facility needs. So, we have some historical information and we need to get some partners that can come in and help us bring those up, help us move that forward. The energy lease that we just are finishing right now with Train, it was a $27 million energy lease that you approved probably three or four years ago because it's finishing. And so, the next step we're going to do is we're going to go back and say, is that meeting what was expected? Make sure we're holding that vendor accountable. And then, absolutely, we'll start looking at, okay, how can we do the next best thing?
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. Would you go back to slide eight? Somebody alluded to that
I may be going the wrong-
Future revenue projections. Would you kind of explain what that means? I'm looking at a two-year difference here from seven, from, what is it, 17, 18, and then down to 19, 20? It's like a $17 million, $200,000 difference. What does that mean?
It means that if our current conservative projections are spot-on, we've got to get really aggressive on the bottom side of the budget and we've got to look at our expenditures. Again, I think it's important to note, this is early and these are projections. We'll be working on these at a much finer level. But the, the meaning of this is, if we continue to have declining revenues, we have got to become more efficient everywhere we can. And we've got to consider every rock and every expenditure that we have on the books today. And that's what zero base is going to let us do. It's going to let us shove to the top the things that are most critical and let us consider everything below those amounts annually.
And, and keep in mind, Mr. Evans, I'm, 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 think I know where you're trying to go with this question. Zero basing will only go so far.
Right.
All right. So, this is also about inefficiencies as a system that we're going to really have to look at the overall system as a whole and eventually come back to this board and say, if we are to give these kids, faculty and staff, the resources that they need to do the jobs they need to do, what does that look like from an efficiency standpoint to maximize the money that we have right now? Because we are very inefficient. And it's only so much you can do with zero basing and GO bonds and all of that stuff.
Yeah, that, that annual cost per pupil that we were talking about earlier this evening is really evidence that we have a lot of work to do in the efficiency area.
My question was going to be, how will this impact us? And I think you just answered that question. Thank you, Dr. Bedell. And thank you, Ms. Quinley.
Thank you so much. Job well done. Appreciate the monitoring reports, the highlights, the PowerPoints. Very well done. Thank you. This, oh, Superintendent Bedell, you're going to introduce the January 24th, 2018 business?
We have no business items for the board to take action on, on the 24th.
Just when I started getting good at reading contracts. Okay. So, this brings us to the conclusion of our agenda for the evening. If there's no objection, the meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
Question for you. Do you consider the difference between the fund balance and investment balance, are those interchangeable?
They're not exactly interchangeable because we're full with. So, when you, the fund balance is-
Okay. Investment to true cash, true investment. Just curious. Thank you.